If you're able to stand, join me for an invocation and a pleasurable. Father, we thank you for the day. We thank you for the beautiful part of the world that we get to work, live, and play in. Help us to be good stewards of what you've given us. Got our conversation tonight. Help us to make good decisions on behalf of our residents. Thank you for all that you do for us, and you never pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will be real call, please.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Gosian.
Here.
Councilmember Han.
Here.
Councilmember Myers.
Here.
Councilmember Popson.
Here.
Councilmember Streetman.
Here.
Councilmember Ward. Mayor Pounds.
Here.
You have a call.
First item of business under item two is election of mayor pro temp. Are there nominations from the floor?
Yes, I would like to. I don't know who was first. I'd like to nominate Councilman Ward, please.
Very good. Any words there? Second? John?
I would like to nominate Councilman Streetman.
Second. Second, layer. Thank you. Other nominations?
Oh. Voting for Councilmember Ward as mayor pro temp. Councilmember Anderson?
No, nay.
Councilmember Gosian?
Nay.
Councilmember Han? Councilmember Myers?
Nay.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman? Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Mayor Pounds?
Nay.
Now voting for Councilmember Streetman. Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gosian?
Aye.
Councilmember Han?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Council, Mayor Pounds?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you. You're going to make sure I eat my veggies and I've paid up. I'm going to inquire for your help there today. Next item is item three, citizens' comments. Nicole, did we have?
Mr. Ted Kinghorn is the only person who signed up to speak this evening.
Mr. Kinghorn, welcome. Name, address, or city, whatever you're comfortable doing, and serial number. And that's it. Ted Kinghorn, Isle of Palms Exchange Club, and representing at the Isle of Palms Service Program, 201 Palm Boulevard. Good evening, council, mayor, guests, staffs.
It should be on.
I didn't touch on.
That's on.
Thank you. She's not the chair.
Touche. Oh, good evening to all of you, and thank you for allowing me to comment. Want to congratulate the mayor and council on your service to the island and wish you the best of luck as you conduct the city's business. I invite you to join the Exchange Club. As you probably know, it's the premier, if only civic organization on the club, on the city with a long history. And we're excited to offer you the LENS program and our request of $5,000 of ATAX funds this evening. Our mission is to strengthen the community and the visitor experience through the LENS program with assistance and support of our Public Safety Department. We'll do this by funding meritorious requests from the Isle of Palms Chief of Police. There are four categories of support that we'll provide. One is hardship request, second, community and visitor support, third, event sponsorship. For instance, during National Police Week, which is the week of May the 15th, we will be hosting in conjunction with our strategic partner at the new Isle of Palms Marina Restaurant. Hopefully, we'll be open. And that will be an event for the community and visitors as well. And then finally, we'll do annual recognition and support of outstanding services for members of the force and others to help with recruitment and retention and morale-boosting efforts. If LENS receives a funding request that we've asked for, we will automatically match by five times that number through the generosity of over 25 founding sponsors over the last three weeks. With the additional support of the 5,000 from the city, we expect that by June, we'll be able to have a factor 10x for the number that we're requesting. Each donor will receive a vehicle or storefront sticker to post on their vehicle or their storefront. And we appreciate their support. Provided a copy of these remarks, as well as some additional information for you for the record, and each of you will be receiving one of these from staff, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ted. Just again, encourage residents to sign up. The agenda usually gets out on Friday, so you've got some time to sign up and get in line for speaking, so we'd love to have more participation as we walk forward. So Ted, thank you for coming and speaking. When we get into the consent agenda and walk through those items, I did, one of the items in the consent agenda is our council retreat, and I just wanted for residents here and watching online to give a little bit of feedback of what happened at that retreat, but more importantly, what didn't happen maybe. But we spent City Council, Desiree, Douglas, we attended an off-site workshop on the afternoon of January 5th and the morning of January 6th at the Post House Inn in Mount Pleasant. Day one was facilitated by Island resident Rick Bradley, which included a team-building exercise that demonstrated how people think, process, and communicate differently, and how we need to be sensitive to this as we're all presented with information with which to make decisions. I would ask council to remember our conversations and keep those fresh as we get going tonight in our first meeting. Also had a discussion on achieving success as a city council and defining what success would look like. It included being respectful, being prepared, having a unified and consistent communication, being perceived as an effective group, which led to a discussion of our guiding principles, and there's some work going on to have that put in front of us on a routine basis, whether posters or cards or something. Working together with respect, communicating with each other, leveraging the committee process to get things done, staying out of the headlines, understanding residents' needs and priorities. Day two, we shifted gears and became a little more tactical, and it included a discussion by the Municipal Association of South Carolina that covered such items as forms of government, powers of council, running effective meetings, compliance issues, Freedom of Information Act, conflicts of interest, and rules of order during meetings. And we closed out with Desiree and Douglas reviewing the strategic plan, goals, and strategies with us, looking for feedback from the new members to finalize the documents for a city council meeting tonight. All in all, I felt council was fully engaged during our time together, a good session, time well spent, given the number of new council members joining this year, and it provided a relaxed atmosphere to get to know each other a bit and set some ground rules for how we will operate together moving forward. So again, council, thank you all for making the time to make that happen and your attendance at that session. So before we get to the consent agenda item, are there any items considered under four that need to be pulled out to have further conversation or a separate vote? Not hearing that, can I have a motion to approve, accept and approve the consent agenda items listed under item four?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Does Nicole?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gosian?
Aye.
Councilmember Han?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward? Mayor Pounds?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you. I have five reports from standing committees. First is Ways and Means. We'll do a quick financial review. Amy, if you don't mind, putting that up. These are results through the end of December, so we're halfway through our fiscal year, which is kind of hard to believe in some respects already. Hard to see, but it's in the packet for you. Our revenue through, for the first six months is about 10.2 million, rough numbers, which is right in line with our budget. Our spending is just under 8 million, which is a decent bit under budget, not unexpected necessarily at this time, but if you look in the packet on the right-hand side of each of those columns is a year-to-date actual percentage of budget. And from a revenue standpoint, almost everything is over budget, with the exception of general, which is primarily property taxes, which again, this time of year, or due to the end of December, is not unusual to be behind there, but almost every other item is up. And from an expense standpoint, almost every other item is under budget, which is great. Our year-to-date local option, sales tax, business license, and building permit revenues are about 28% above on the first two items. Building permit activity is up about 52%. Douglas, I'm sure your office can attest to that number, so revenue is looking really good. General fund expenses are running about 3% ahead of last year, but well in line with budget. We have about $29 million in cash reserves, of which about 12 million is unrestricted, and about 4.5 million is unspent bond proceeds, which will happen as we finish up projects. If you'll go to the slide deck, Amy, for capital projects. We'll run through that real quick. This is included in the packet. I'm not going to get a whole lot of detail. In our Ways and Means Committee, if you residents are interested in watching that, Desiree ran through this in some detail. We've included it in the packet again for you tonight, just so you can see where we are with regard to our major projects. The Marina Restaurant renovation, just again, highlight HVAC ductwork is complete, all units are installed. Kitchen hood has been delivered and actually been installed over the end of last week. Bathroom tile is complete, except accent tile over the counters, draw walls almost 100% complete. They're starting the ceiling grid installation this week. The interior shiplap and trim is complete. Finishing out trim work and bars, trim work on the bars in the next two, three weeks, starting interior painting. Metal roof is done. Exterior pavers will start happening this week. Back deck rail cables are in progress, and as well as on the front. Wood floor is scheduled for the week of February 2nd, and there are some pictures included as far as recent progress on that particular project. The Marina Dock Rehabilitation, we extended our builder's risk insurance through March of '22, the end of our project. We have some electrical issues that we're working through with engineers and contracts to take care of on all the docks right now. Actually, engineer and contractor are evaluating various solutions to address tripping hazard at the end of the gangway. The fuel hut, if you've been down there, has made great progress. Roof is actually on and windows are in. Hopefully, that will be completed by the end of this month, and there's ongoing coordination with the subcontractor who will install the fuel dispenser and the fuel system when we can get to that point. Phase three drainage, which is 30th, 36th, and 41st outfalls, 30th and 36th, that contract has been executed. Supply lead times are causing us a little bit of issue on scheduling and working with, you can back up one, Amy. Sorry, thank you, is causing a little bit of time, schedule time with this on flipping our projects potentially. I know we've had some meetings with Wild Dunes. Desiree, I don't know if you have any updates you want to share there from a, we were going to start with 30th. I think we may flip to 36th, given the timing of what we need to go across the golf course.
We were able to meet with the partners at Wild Dunes, and they agreed with a shifting of the schedule, which would have them working on the golf course beginning of May, and followed by the road closure and the installation of the box culvert on the road. So we're working with them. They've been very gracious in understanding at the issues that the contractor is having securing material. So we're moving forward, and both projects should be completed by the end of this year.
Great, thank you. And the 41st Avenue, still waiting on permits from various agencies at this point, but hopefully.
Mayor?
Yes.
You may want to update the community about the grant that the city received for 41st?
So we had applied for a grant, and remind me the entity, Desiree?
It's through the state's Office of Resiliency, state money, and the city's. You want to go ahead?
Yeah, so we had requested a little over 2 million for the 41st Outfall Project, as well as the Waterway Boulevard elevation and walkway path. And we received, found out Friday, I guess, we've received 1.4 million of our 2.1 request. So that's a great piece of news and good work on behalf of our city staff to secure that one for us. So thank you for that. Thank you for reminding.
Yes, I want to thank city council for supporting, adding to the budget funds that we could hire a grant writer, and we're partnering with a consultant that's been very successful in writing grants for other communities. And this was the first time that we worked with her and knocked it out of the park, and we'll be continuing to use her services. So all we did was provide information. She really put it together. We're really happy about.
Our expectations have now been set.
Yes.
Thank you, Ted. Comprehensive drainage master plan progressing well and on schedule. Field work is complete. Rainfall and water level monitors are installed, and operational collection of data is underway, and that is on track for completion by the end of this year. Last project is the underground utility conversion at 21st and Palm. Kind of our first entree into doing this in the recent history. So you, this is the area right before the church at the end of, at the end of Palm. So Dominion's very close to having four profiles for the SC DOT permit, and final design drawings of four profiles are just about how deep to make the lines and other existing utilities that are happening there. So some good progress. One, there had not been much over the last few months, but moving forward in a good way. Other items in Ways and Means, almost everything's on the consent agenda, but there was election of chair and vice chair. I was elected chair. Councilmember Ward was vice chair. We had a conversation around the fiscal '23 budget preparation and process and review of timeline for that, and essentially, it'll be January. The department heads are looking at the 10-year capital plans. February, that'll move into the standing committees, where we review the 10-year capital plans, as well as a revised forecast and budget numbers. March, we hope to have one budget workshop and take care of our finalization of our budget there. And then April and May have committee approvals at Ways and Means, first reading at council, public comment, and final approval in May. So we've given ourselves a little bit of a buffer before we get to the start of our fiscal year in July, but I think it's doable from a timing standpoint. And the last item in Ways and Means, our next meeting is Tuesday, February 15th at 6:00 PM. We've got one item from Ways and Means, just from a timing standpoint. We didn't get to cover it at Ways and Means, but we've got one item, a consideration of request from the Law Enforcement Neighborhood Support Program for ATAX funding in the amount of $5,000. You can see the budget there. The advisory committee has recommended an award of $2,500. So if I can have a motion and a second?
Would you like to make a motion to approve the $5,000?
Second, thank you. Before we get into discussion, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote. I don't think it's that necessary, but I think just in the interest of full disclosure and transparency that is high on our list of things to do. I was a founding sponsor of this particular organization and believe that strongly in it. I have zero benefit or ownership or oversight or role in it going forward, but I just felt in the best interest, I felt, to refuse myself from this vote. So I can lead the conversation. I just can't obviously have any discussion on it. So Nicole, I've got this, and I'll give to you. So we've had a motion and a second. Are there comments, conversations, resting?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I tell you, I did a lot of reading about the LENS program here that's been presented, and you know, had an excellent article in the Isle of Palm this past issue. And I just feel strongly that this type of support for our Public Safety Department for our island, things this stands for, this partnership between Isle of Palms Exchange Club, City's Police Department at this point, and helping out in hardship situations, I not only think that we should consider the $5,000 minimum, I would like to amend it to offer $10,000 for the program, for ATAX dollars. So if I need to make that in form of a motion?
Amendment.
So it will be an amendment to approve $10,000 to go to the LENS program.
Second?
I'll second it.
How much is left in our discretionary funds for ATAX this year?
Of the $50,000 budgeted amount, there's $24,000 available.
24 left?
Yes, sir.
Do you foresee any, any surprises down the road in the next six months?
No, but I can't, I can think of annual events that typically come before this group for sponsorship requests. The aquarium has been one that the city has supported in the past. I know Lo Velo is planning on coming again. So you, we may see an additional applications down the line. But even with a $10,000 award, it would, we would have $14,000 through the end of 20, of June of this year.
Do you want to withdraw the motion? Withdraw the second? Who had the second on the original motion?
Yeah, I withdraw the second.
Yeah, Jan.
I just have a question. I'm not familiar with this organization. Is this a first request to the city that we haven't funded this organization in the past?
That is correct. It's a newly created group, and this is the first time that they're requesting funding from the city.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, I, I listened to the ATAX committee where they discussed this. It's my understanding that this, these funds would be used for visitors and tourists, and the funds are going to be segregated. Is that, is that correct? Is that the way this is going to be allocated?
I believe that that was a request from the ATAX committee to make sure that whatever funds are provided through the ATAX was only used by activities that are impacted directly by tourism and tourists.
But is that, is that in actuality what's going to happen with the funds? Is that what we're requesting as part of this, is that they be spent just for tourists? Or can they co-mingle with all the funds of the LENS program?
Yeah, I think at the, at the end of the year, the city could request some type of accounting to make sure that whatever funds the city provided were spent on activities that can be tied back to tourism-impacted services.
How would the increasing it to 10,000 affect the monies that have been promised? In the five times or 10 times, would, would those numbers go up also? Or, and that might not be a question that anyone answered.
You may suspend the rules and have Ted approach, so he can answer.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gosian?
Aye.
Councilmember Han?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward? Mayor Pounds?
Aye.
All in favor?
Ted.
It would be our, first of all, thank you for that consideration and the generosity. It would be our hope that no matter what the city contributes, we will do our best efforts to leverage that as much as possible. And thus far, the public has been very supportive. I'd break it out in three categories for you if you're interested. A third of the support has come from businesses, a third from individuals, and a third from Exchange Club members. And I think we've just scratched the surface, in part what Desiree indicated. After our first year of experience, we'll all know what the demand was and what the resources are to service that demand. And we certainly will have a better understanding that 12 months from now.
May I ask Ted some questions? I've got, I've got two questions, Ted, and I support LENS. I think it's a great thing that you're doing. The description in the, in the document that was supplied to us says the project description is to give back my supporting initiatives that focus on families and those in need of exclusive partnership with IOP Police Department and first responders to provide support to our officers and their families by sponsoring morale-boosting initiatives that show our appreciation for all they do. I've got no quarrel with any of that. I think all that's faggots. And I'd be more than happy to give the money out of the regular IOP funds for that, of the regular city funds for that. My question is two things. One is, are fire first responders included with LENS? And second, how does this square with what I understand to be the ATAX initiative? This has to be spent only on tourism-related objectives. And that can be elevating the tourism experience on the island, but we have to have a tourism hook.
Right. Number one, we would expect that all the funds we allocate indirectly will support tourism. The guests that come onto the island, as you know, are significant, and it's greater throughout the year. Every time, one could say that we have retention of a police officer, or a fire officer for that matter, helps us in the summertime when we have beach officers out there, and we're supporting them for a saving of a visitor or a resident, and they maybe want to have some special recognition, as the chief would indicate, and we can support that. That would be beneficial. With regards to fire, it was my very first question. When this program was brought to our attention and sponsored by the founder of LENS, and there's a similar program downtown Charleston, my first reaction was, well, what about public safety? And I view it more as public safety. And he said, absolutely, we'd have no restrictions against that. Our thought is, we have a year experience, see what the needs are. And my current maturity of thinking is, if there's anybody in the department, in a department head, sees that there's a special need, a visitor in trouble, a tourist in trouble, someone who needs special assistance that's a citizen or was within their department, they should just make a request to the police chief. And if he feels that has, that has merit, then submit it to us. So I don't see limiting it. I see it much more broader, and especially if you support the funding request that has been amended and offered, and if we continue to have success in our own donor development effort.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I'd like to amend the motion or offer amendment. I don't know. I don't know how to do it. That, that the funds be limited to use only with tourism-related activities as set forth in the ATAX document.
Well, so the, the, that could certainly be an amendment. However, it may be easier to just refer to the law that governs the expenditure of ATAX funds. Section 6410 of state law already has a definition of what tourism expenditures are.
Absolutely.
And it is included as law enforcement.
And all I want to do is, okay, tag that so that we, we're 100% in line with ATAX.
That could be a friendly amendment, and we can just make reference of that specific section of state law? Would that be okay, Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Okay.
It would, it would obviously only be the 5,000 or 10,000 that we would be giving that would be, that would have that restriction, though, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And my question is, the 5,000 has been withdrawn, so the choices that we have is either $10,000 or the original proposal for 2,500?
The original proposal was for $5,000. The ATAX committee only approved 2,500. The motion that was originally presented and then withdrawn was for five, but that got amended. So right now, the only motion on the table is for $10,000. So either $10,000 or another amendment could be raised by, by council.
I'd like to make another amendment, that, that the amount be limited to 2,500 as proposed by the ATAX committee, because this is the first year. I think it's a good opportunity. But when startup, when, when you've got a startup, it really needs some test time, and I would rather them come back next year with successes, and then we can raise the amount. So 2,500 is what I'm proposing.
Motion. There a second?
Okay.
They're being known, that amendment failed.
Right. Other questions? Nicole?
Voting on motion to approve $10,000 to the LENS program. Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gosian?
Aye.
Councilmember Han?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Mayor Pounds? Oh, I'm sorry. Recused. Maybe cross it out. All in favor?
Thank you. Conversation. So continuing with committee reports, next will be Public Safety Committee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met on 10:00 AM on Thursday, January 13th. First thing we had was Councilmember Anderson was elected as chair, Councilmember Streetman was elected vice chair, and Councilmember Han was also present. For the Fire Department interim chief, Briscoe, reported that December activity included two fire calls, 24 EMS calls, four rescue, two service, and 23 other. Notable events included a new fire truck, participation goodnight lights, fire prevention displays at various community events, and the promotion of Chris Fesos to fire captain. The Police Department's chief, Cornet, reported on participation in Toys for Tots, Silver Slammer, goodnight lights, and hosting the FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Course. Another class will be scheduled by the FBI in March. Our animal control officer is now certified, and the annual awards banquet banquet was held, and officers recognized are listed in the committee meeting reports. Chief Cornet also noted that overall calls for service were down from twenty twenty. Good news. Incident reports were also down, but traffic stops were up, probably because we have a new traffic unit that's increasing enforcement and citations. Gun violations, DUIs, and all drug related charges were up in twenty twenty one. Code enforcement violations are also up, but that's probably due to the creation of a code enforcement officer now. Chief Cornet will host coffee with a cop and other neighborhood meetings in the New Year, so look for him out and about. And the final is, the chief stated that the department is hiring BSOs, which are beef beach service officers, beach service officers, who begin work on March first, so submit your application to the department. There are extensive reports, wonderful reports, that Chief Briscoe and Chief Cornet submit every month that are posted online in our meeting minutes for the committee, and also on their websites. There's a tremendous amount of data. So I encourage everyone who's interested to go there to learn more information about what the what the departments are doing. With respect to old business, discussion and consideration of ordinance twenty twenty one to sixteen to restrict vicious dangerous dogs will be voted on later in the meeting, I think. Administrator Fagoso also presented an update on the study of the modification to the Isle à Pommes connector to include assessment of alternative configurations to improve traffic flow, pedestrian, and emergency access. Committee decided to have a special meeting, and it's scheduled right now, as of today, for February tenth at ten AM before the committee's February meeting, which has been moved to February seventeenth at ten AM to discuss the special meeting will discuss the specifics of what success looks like for such an effort before going to city council with their recommendations. So that should be the February tenth meeting should be chock full of lots of information. New business, I think it's already in Ways and Means, the request for adding turnout gear was presented by Ways and Means, and the cost will be partly offset by the sale of an obsolete engine and jet ski. I believe that was already is that will be up for approval tonight? Consent general, okay. Miscellaneous business, the next regular meeting of the Public Safety Committee will be held on the regular meeting is Thursday, February seventeenth at ten AM, and the special meeting to discuss issues with the connector will be held on Thursday, February tenth at ten AM.
Next is Public Works.
Mr. Mayor, I've got one easy change to the minutes. Those present were did not have council movements.
You'll do that at the next committee meeting.
Change the minutes, okay.
Public Works Committee meeting was held at four forty five PM, January twelfth. Election of Chair and Vice Chair, Councilmember Han was elected Vice Chair. Department reports, Director Pierce and Senior Director Zaria.
You got it.
Anyway, the the minutes are here. You have them. I'm not going to walk you through everything. I'm trying to get a quick report at the request of the mayor. The old business, we already talked about update on phase three drainage, small internal projects, update on discussion of golf cart path on Ocean Park Plaza, design has been completed, it's mid SCDOT for approval. And it's to go have it complete by the start of the season. And so take two profligate in the area. The next Public Works Committee meeting will be held February third, two thousand twenty two at four thirty PM, and the meeting was adjourned at five fourteen PM.
Thank you, Jimmy. Recreation Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Right Committee met on January tenth. All committee members were present, along with staff. First order of business was the election of Chair and Vice Chair. I was elected chairman, and Councilwoman Myers was elected Vice Chair. We had no citizen comments. Next item was the report by Director Page. She gave her monthly department report. She updated on all the regular programs and events. Residents can go to our website and check out these programs, and of course, the dates of the upcoming events. So won't go through a whole lot of that to try to keep it short. I did want to, and again, the minutes are posted, so I won't read some of the the items that we talked about there. But I did want to recognize that that Director Page reported that Aaron Sweet, Recreation Supervisor for Athletics, received two designations, one CRP, which is Certified Recreation Professional, and SCLEAD, South Carolina Leadership Enhancement and Development Institute. So just wanted to give a shout out. Nice work on those accomplishments. The next item of business was old business. We got an update on the implementing of the ongoing registration program. Staff is working, currently working and practicing training with Vermont Systems on this online registration, and hopefully, we might be up and running where residents can go on and register online. Hopefully, it'll be up and running sometime, maybe in this month in February. The other item on old business was a discussion of the return of Sunday Recreation Center hours. Again, Director Page concerned, had concerns of staffing shortages. I think this has been an ongoing thing, and we just don't have the staffing. So the committee just recommended that we take this off the agenda as an ongoing item until we can get a sense that there is a staffing possibility, that we can resurrect it and bring it back to a discussion point. Under new business, there was a report of the replacement of the John Deere tractor, which we all committee members agreed with, and of course, we dealt with it at Ways and Means. The next meeting for our committee is Monday, February seventh. And if there's no questions, Mr. Mayor, that ends my report.
Questions? Thank you, Kevin. Next Personnel Committee, John?
Yes. Personnel Committee met on January eleventh. All the committee members were present, as well as Administrator Fagoso and H Officer Lad. First order of business was elected chairman. I was elected chairman of the committee, and Councilmember Anderson was elected as Vice Chair. Under old business, we received an update on the hiring of the fire chief. There were fifty three applicants, of which the hiring consultants narrowed down to fifteen plus two alternates. This group will be further narrowed to five through interviews. Those five candidates then will participate in written exercises and skill exercises evaluation done by a group of former fire chiefs to get that get them down to two final candidates. The hope is that we get this down to the final two candidates by the end of February. We discussed the creation of a Spirit of the Island Award. This award that would be in addition to the Signal Thirty Award and recognize a remarkable single achievement by a resident. Staff will be bringing a list of possible criteria for the award for review at the next Personnel Committee meeting. Under new business, we discussed establishing a code of conduct for city council. After a lot of discussion and review of the city of Charleston's code of conduct, staff will be developing a code structure around the oath of office that we all took, as well as a process to hold each other accountable. This will be reviewed at the next committee meeting as well. We did discuss the selection of the IOP Water and Sewer Commission vacancy. It was suggested that the Water and Sewer Commission be involved with those interviews. We will bring and bring two candidates first committed to the Personnel Committee to recommend the city council. There could be some change of that, I understand, but we'll talk about it at the next committee meeting. But that's the way we left it at the at the end of that meeting. The next meeting will be held Tuesday, February eighth at nine AM.
Thank you, John. Jimmy, question? You you said something about the criteria being individuals. Isn't that says should be individuals and or group?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I wasn't involved with the original motion. It was the previous council, but maybe Desiree can answer that.
Sure. I mean, I think that we'll we'll keep it general enough so that if if it's a group or one individual, you all would have the ability to evaluate a nomination or in that way. So yeah, I'm I'm sure that the language should be kept broad enough to allow for that.
Other questions? Thank you, John. Real Property Committee?
Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor. The Real Property Committee met at one thirty PM, Monday, January the tenth. We had our call to order. Everyone was present, Councilwoman Myers, Council Councilman Popsen, and of course, myself. And we had Administrator Fagoso and Director Carr with us as well. First real order of business was election of Chair and Vice Chair. And I was nominated as Chair of Real Property Committee, and Councilmember Popsen seconded the motion, and it passed unanimously. And then I I've made a motion to nominate Councilmember Popsen as Vice Chair. Mayor Sepp seconded the motion, and that motion passed unanimously. We had approval of our previous minutes, meetings, minutes, citizens' comments. We had none Marina comments, Marina tenant comments. We had none. Under old business, that's that's basically our capital project updates, which got covered in Ways and Means, and then briefly tonight by the mayor. So I won't go into a lot of a lot of information about that, because it's right there all online. I did go down to the Marina today, just look around some, along with the Marina manager. And, you know, there were some issues down there that had been addressed. To your point, Mr. Mayor, the electrical part of it, at least, probably had out on the face dock, has been repaired. Now, there's still some other smaller issues down there. I know that they're all working with, but good progress. Update on Marina restaurant renovation. We are going to have a item that at the end of our presentation here, we'll have for discussion and consideration. It will just wait on that, but you heard what the progress is with the restaurant earlier, the capital project update. Proposed public dock and green space, we now now that we have that turned back over to us, we have sixteen resident only parking spots there right now. So we do at last have some resident parking. If you have a decal or Wild Dunes sticker, you know, then you can park in that area there, which was normally the area that was the water spa, water sports dock. We had a regular update on ADA beach access improvements, again, that's on record in the minutes, so I won't go any further on that. Just suffice it to say that we are still awaiting for OCRM's decision as to how far we can extend the Mobi map. And discussion of shared parking at Marina, we had that as a subject on our agenda. And we noted the desire of the community to have free parking at the Marina. And Administrator Fagoso is working with the Marina manager and also working with our committee so that we can look for some ideas going forward as to how that might happen. So it's still a work in progress there as well. And let's see, the discussion consideration under new business, a proposal from ATM for the design and engineering of permitted improvements, including the ADA gangway. We dealt with that earlier tonight by our vote on the Senate agenda. And it's a discussion of proposed pedestrian entrance to the municipal parking lot on Front Beach. We had a good bit of conversation about that, and that's for aesthetic improvements that are being recommended to the municipal parking lot on Front Beach. So they're in the bidding process on that. And we should have more information on that after our next meeting. Under miscellaneous business, the next meeting of the Real Property Committee will be held on Monday, February the seventh at one thirty PM. So that ends my part of that report, unless there's any questions on what I've covered so far. Okay, so we do have an item here under Real Property, discussion and consideration of request for marker one sixteen for city sponsored event status between eleven thirty AM to ten PM on several weekends throughout February and March. Specifically, February twenty fifth, twenty sixth, twenty seventh, so this is Friday through Sunday on holidays. And March would be fourth, fifth, and sixth, eleventh, twelfth, thirteenth, eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth. And there's also, they've asked for consideration to have a food truck at the leased property. So that is something we will need to discuss here tonight. So I would guess that we ought to just open that up for discussion. Okay, I make a motion that we consider or have discussion consideration of the request marker one sixteen for the city sponsored event.
Second? Thank you. Desiree, anything you want to add before we get into discussion or see where the discussion takes us?
Yeah, happy to.
The questions, comments on this, Blair?
Mayor, I'm very sympathetic to the plight of any new business trying to open, and I know that it takes time, and there are delays and unforeseen delays. I've had them myself. With that said, I don't know that we can change the ordinance just for them as it relates to food trucks. If 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 we are going to allow them to have food trucks, I think we have to open it up to the whole island. And I'm concerned about that. If we were to do it just for them, that would also set a precedent, and we would have a long list of people wanting exceptions for food trucks all over the island. So I think it's either we're going to have food trucks on the island, or we're not going to have food trucks on the island. But I'm open to have my mind changed. That's where I stand right now.
Yeah, thank you, Blair. And just for clarity, Desiree, what did you talk about with the, you know, this this exception's not just for marker one sixteen. There is a section in our ordinance that allows this to happen.
Oh, so right now, the city code does not allow any food trucks on the island. There is an exception for city sponsored events that the city council can take into consideration. That's why there's specific dates included in their request. You know, frankly, I don't know if this is more appropriate for legal to provide an opinion on the the issues or the concerns raised by Councilmember Han. Certainly, that would be appropriate. You know, I I think today we heard from the marker one one six that they may not even have a, they may not have a food truck on premises, that they may just consider cooking hamburgers and hot dogs. So I I don't, Douglas, do you have any other additional information? I I don't think that they have, they have a consistent or coherent plan as of right now. I think that they are trying to know what their options are, get approval from the city if that is the path that they end up going. So I I'm afraid I just don't, I don't think that we're going to have all the answers right now regarding this request.
For for a little bit of background about food trucks, there was a time when the zoning code specified that the Board of Zoning Appeals would grant these as what's called a special exception. There was a series of, one was an airstream, one was a food truck. A series of those got approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Council took exception to that, and they changed the code to say you can only do it if it is an event approved by city council. Since that time, so that that's been in the code now for, it used to be the board, now it's you. So I don't think there's been kind of a floodgate holding back a lot of requests. So I personally wouldn't be too concerned that you're going to be inundated with requests. Having said that, you know, I I do think it was the intention of council at that time to have control as to what, you know, what really elevated itself to being a city event. So having, so there really is a, you know, it's a bright line in the sand as to when these things can and cannot be brought over on the island, and that's and that's really it. We have, as a staff, talked to the tenants along the way about how to get how to help them along. We have, as a staff, talked to the tenants along the way about how to get, how to help them along. They're having delays with equipment. It sounds to me as though the building is going to be complete, the grounds are going to be complete, but they're going to be waiting on a few pieces of key kitchen equipment. So this, I think, is being seen by them as a stopgap to get them through several weeks where they're really going to have a finished project minus these few key pieces. Also, though, having said that, I told them, you know, between, if you want to do it in January, if you want to do it in February, you really have to get it approved in January because they're not going to meet again until the end of, until the end of February. So I think that might be why the plan is very kind of open-ended. And there's really not a lot of a plan. And as Desiree has said, they even said, you know, if council doesn't approve it, we could potentially just cook out and forego the truck altogether. So we have had dialogue back and forth. But I said, I would say that there still is not really an ironclad plan as to how this would work. I think the tenants are agreeable to any latitude you could give them that would let them use the facility while they're waiting for these key pieces of equipment.
Yeah, I just have one question, and it may be a minor distinction. But are they wanting to bring in an outside food truck to sell somebody else's food? Or are they wanting to bring a food truck in to use as a temporary kitchen for them since they do not have their equipment, kitchen equipment, and to use as a kitchen to produce their own food?
Yeah, so we posed that exact question to them, and they didn't have a crystal clear response. It appeared that they did not know the answer to that. If, if there was a sticking point with an outside entity coming in, that's, I think, when they felt like they would be agreeable if that was a condition of the approval to just cooking outside and not having an outside establishment come onto the island.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion at this point, or should I wait till the discussion?
You can either make an amendment or an amendment law.
If I may. Councilwoman Streepman just made a motion to discuss and consider. There was not a motion to approve their request. So if he makes a motion to approve, I mean, you're discussing it. I don't know that we need to go, I don't, we're doing that. So his motion was not approved.
Well, my motion is, it seems very undefined about really what they want. And my motion would be we postpone this until they come forward with a more definitive plan of really what they want. Because really, if it waited to the next meeting, all they would be missing is one weekend in February.
You really don't have to make a motion for that. Rules of order, you say postpone it.
Yeah, that's what I, I would say we postpone it.
That's my recommendation at this point.
We need a second on that, Nicole?
Yes.
I second.
So, sorry, Jimmy. Go ahead. No, go ahead. Just a couple of quick key points. These special events have usually been like nonprofit events for the city, like the Front Beach Festival, the Christmas Festival and stuff. And it's just volunteer organizations for the most part. And there's no profit involved. This is a variation of that. And very quickly, all this goes back to after Hugo in 1990. The island was having a really rough time. And so the city council, at that time, we approved letting people bring over mobile homes to set up in their front yard and rebuild their houses. And after a while, there was no, there was no sunset on it. And finally, council, I think it was in late 1990, I can't remember, early 1991, we said we had to put a sunset on, we had to, we had to cut it out. And so we stopped mobile homes, we stopped allowing people to sleep in mobile homes in RV trailers, and we stopped all the food truck vendors, all of them. We just said we had to make a decision to cut it off. And so I don't know if it helps you or not, but that's the history of it. That's why we've been very, very strict about issuing these.
I just have.
Katie. I mean, I feel like it's, this is an emergency situation that, you know, whether or not they need it, I think we wouldn't be in this situation if it wasn't for COVID and all of the supply chain issues that everybody is experiencing. So to me, this kind of is, would be like if a restaurant had a fire and had to shut down to repair for a fire, would we let them bring in a food truck so that they could make money while they're preparing after a fire? So I feel like there, there's room for an exception for a situation like this without us opening the floodgates. But as they've said, they might not even need it. Is, one other question, comment, is there any prohibition against them just hamburgers and hot dogs outside? Like, is that?
No, they, they already have, a special exception predates these tenants even to allow the outdoor sale and service of food. So they already have that. It's really, it's really the truck is specific, specifically kicks at the council.
I guess, go ahead.
Yeah, do they have, also have a license to sell alcohol at this point?
I don't know the answer to that, but they would have to.
Yeah, I mean.
Chief Garnett saying no. Or shaking his head, saying no.
We doubt it, but they would have to make those arrangements through the Department of Revenue directly.
Right. Then I guess another comment or question would be, what about access to restrooms, facilities?
They did, that was one of the questions we asked. They did indicate that they would be bringing in temporary restrooms for those events.
Yeah, so let me, just one comment, and we'll take that vote. I've got a comment, thank you for the historical perspective because it is helpful to know why it was and why it wasn't. For sure. Yeah. You know, Douglas, I think marker 116 is reacting to your comment to say you've got, you need to do it in January, given your timing. Actually, our next meeting is February 22nd, which is in front of their first weekend's request. So I think we might have helped them, pushed them along to get something done quicker than they might have wanted to. That's okay. But I think, so the motion we have in front of us is to postpone this until the February, until a later date, until the plan is fleshed out. John, is that fair?
That's correct.
Any other questions on, before we vote on that motion? Nicole?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Bogosian?
Aye.
Councilmember Hahn?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Streepman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward? Mayor Pounds?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you.
That is my report.
All right, Mayor. Thank you. Next item, six, reports from city officers, boards, and commissions, Board of Zoning Appeals. No meeting in January. Planning Commission, the minutes are attached to the packet. I didn't see Accommodation Tax Advisory Committee, minutes are attached, and there are three recommendations from our Accommodation Tax Committee. Before we tackle that, I'd love to just step back real quick and provide a little bit of history for residents that may not be up to speed on this, new council members, old council members, you know, wherever. But just a quick recap. In January of 2021, city council tasked the ATAX Committee with reviewing possible alternatives to our current arrangement with the Charleston Visitor Bureau, known as CBB, including better, a better way to document their work or spending on our behalf. As a reminder, this is the 30% accommodations tax that is generated, that we collect, that state law dictates we use for tourism marketing. Some municipalities have used these funds for other uses, however, our current view is that it must be used for tourism marketing. The ATAX Committee spent many months doing research and collecting data into our current provider. ATAX Committee provided an update to the Ways and Means Committee in September 2021 with progress to date and their findings at that time. They found we should have an executed agreement with CBB, institute some metrics reporting for what success would look like and what we want the focus of CBB to be, have better financial reporting back from CBB, CBB on how the money is spent, and to look at alternatives to our current arrangement. Since the September meeting, the ATAX Committee recommended three items detailed in tonight's agenda, with the last one being at their November 21st meeting. Given council schedule has been delayed until this meeting to review the recommendations and decide our next steps. First, I'd really like to thank the ATAX Committee, and specifically Chair Ray Burns, for their work over the past few months. Our, the hours they've spent in research and the items they found that need our attention, along with evaluating alternatives to the CBB, has been a great help in getting council to this point. So we've got these recommendations from this advisory committee. What I would like to do, and I'll make a motion in a minute, and Nicole, I'll have this in writing for you if you don't have to try and capture it, is, I just want to put it out there what I would like to do, then we can have a motion a second and talk about it. I'd like to make a motion in a moment, but I'd like to recommend that we form a task force to study and provide a go-forward business model with specific recommendations for our review. These recommendations should include, are there alternative uses to the 30% funds? Should we revamp our current relationship with CBB? Should we look at establishing our own marketing organization and use some of these funds for I.O.P.-specific tourism promotion? So essentially, establish a business model for how to use these funds going forward. Stay with the CBB, some combination of marketing organizations or a different approach altogether. I would suggest this task force be led by Rusty Streepman, our CBB rep, and include members as follows. And again, Nicole, I will give you this in writing. The president of the newly formed I.O.P. Chamber of Commerce. Some of you may not know there is a Chamber of Commerce chapter on the island now, so you include that president. A representative from the Wild Dunes Resort, a representative from the Palms Hotel, the chair of our ATAX Committee, a representative from the rental management company industry, a representative from the food and beverage industry, a resident owning rental property or properties. And if there are other council members that would like to join in on this task force, that would be fine. I think this group would give us a good representation from all tourism-related businesses and not just accommodations. This is a critical decision for our island as how we move forward. And I think it's, it needs further discussion, and it needs to be done right. So I'll make a motion that we establish a task force consisting of the members outlined that I just read, asking them to come back in no more than six months with a go-forward business model for our 30% ATAX funds. I'll second that. Questions, comments, discussion, observations?
Good idea.
Other ideas?
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to add, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, I'm learning here. Add to, add to your motion a date when, so that this moves along and doesn't flounder?
I gave them six months.
Six months. Okay, did you?
Six-month sentence.
But if it could be done sooner.
No later than, yeah. Is that, Blair, are you looking specific date, or you'll give?
Fair enough. Six months seems like a long time, but okay.
I just said no longer than.
How, what's the timeframe for, sorry, what's the timeframe for getting people on this? Is it?
Yes, we've talked to no one on this. Other than Rusty. At this point, so there's, you know, and kind of Blair, your comment too. You know, I'd love for six months to be getting up to speed, getting this group together, and getting some action done. We've been kicking this around now for about a year. So that is obvious. Next step, very quickly, is to engage these folks, you know, identify the right personnel that we want to have on this task force with Rusty leading it. So that's, that's job one, very quickly. Desiree, anything? Katie, does that answer?
It does. Is there a protocol for finding these people? Or, I mean, is this just a word of mouth, or is Rusty in charge of finding everyone?
You may not be aware, this is my first meeting. So this task force is new.
I'm sorry, not meaning to ask hard questions.
I think.
Well, you're probably going to say what I was going to say. I'm thinking that the city administrator, Fregoso, would make the initial contact with everyone or all these titles that are mentioned on the list.
Okay.
To set up our first meeting, our first get-together.
Yeah, that's correct. And, you know, have some folks in mind representing that list. And I think it's, everybody recognizes how important this issue is and doing it right. And I think that members of the community will be eager to be part of the task force. It's going to be very specific and very tailored about what their goal is and the expectations.
Jimmy? Sure, just a quick question. Will there, as far as governance goes, will the recommended members of the task force come back to city council for approval?
Good question. I'm assuming, and your question is, if it would probably be a best idea, best practice to do that. Would that need to come back to personnel?
No, we can bring this back or to full council in February, and you can all formally adopt, appoint them.
Look at that, Katie, we got a month to put our team together.
Plenty of time.
Come back there, we'll have to leave people land.
Yeah, we can bring forward a recommendation based on, you know, my discussions with Councilmember Streepman and the mayor, and hopefully bring forward a slate or a group of people that you all will embrace and appoint.
Excellent point, good clarification, Jimmy. Other questions or comments? Nicole?
Voting on the long motion has eloquently justified, Mayor. Because please don't ask me to say that.
Mayor, do you want to include that approving the task force to be appointed at the following council meeting?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Bogosian?
Aye.
Councilmember Hahn?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Streepman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward? Mayor Pounds?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you. Good conversation around that topic again. It's critical, and we just need to get it right, however we look forward, whatever that looks like. Item D, Environmental Advisory Committee, minutes are attached. Reports from special or joint committees, none. Petitions received, referred, or disposed of, none. Bills already in possession of council. Ordinance 2021-16, an ordinance to include restrictions of vicious or dangerous dogs. Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Chief, would you mind just adding what you would like to add on this topic? Before we get to any discussion?
Good evening. So I think we've, we've had several discussions about dogs since I've been here on the island for two and a half years. And most of them relate to animals at large. And then separately, dog bites. In the past, they were kind of placed together, and there was no separation of the two different infractions because there was only animals at large. This gives us the ability to have a separate infraction for a dangerous dog or a dog that unprovokingly attacks somebody. If you follow state law, Title 46, Chapter 3, this really reads the same way as state law. And for some of you to put that in perspective as to why that's important for us, our animal patrol officer is not a certified law enforcement officer. So he cannot write state statute ordinances. He is a certified animal patrol officer, but not a police officer. So this gives him the ability to take those enforcement actions that mimic state law and address them through municipal summons and a civil fine. And it clearly lays out the process on how we will address those different incidents. Because you may have a violation of a vicious dog bite that's still in compliance with the leash law or one that is in violation of both. And this gives us the ability to treat them to different infractions.
Questions?
Yes, sir. One quick question, Chief. This ordinance does not involve dogs by breed, correct?
That's correct.
Right, thank you.
There was conversation in last year's Public Safety around that. But, I mean, again, best practice was not to go down that path.
Right.
Other questions? Jimmy, do you mind if I make a friendly amendment to waive the reading?
Of course not.
Of this, of this item?
Oh, you're waiving the reading?
Yes. No further questions? Nicole, whenever you ready?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Bogosian?
Aye.
Councilmember Hahn?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Streepman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward? Mayor Pounds?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Item 10, introduction of new bills, resolutions, and proclamations. First one has a typo in it, it should be Resolution 2022-01, authorizing a request to South Carolina Department of Transportation to reduce the speed limit to 25 miles per hour on all secondary roads within the city of Isle of Palms unless otherwise posted.
Motion to approve resolution.
Second.
And Nicole was first reading, do we?
Resolutions, all?
Yeah, just, just one vote.
Just one vote, sorry.
For the resolution.
And so any discussion or items? Yes, ma'am?
I'd just like to say, as a traffic engineer, that limiting speed limits to 25 miles an hour on secondary roads is common and a good idea. And certainly is within the standards of the traffic engineering practice. So I think it's a good idea.
What are, what are the secondary roads we're talking about?
Really, everything but Palm, right?
The Palm.
And whatever's. Already got a speed limit on it, and Wild Dunes specifically, there's all kinds of speed limits in there.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yes, if there is a road, and I think it's, so it's in the language of the resolution, if there's a road that has a lower speed limit, that remains the same. It's those that are not posted, that currently are at 30, would go to 25.
Blair, does that answer your question or kind of?
Yes, it does. Are we talking about lowering Palm now to?
No.
No, no, it's not a primary, it's not a secondary route. There's a definition, State DOT has a definition.
And then forty one to the Marina, is that considered secondary?
But it's posted at twenty five.
I just think about that old song, I can't go fifty five.
Nowhere on the island.
Sometimes they do leave in the island in the summertime.
Unless it's raining.
Yeah, exactly.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Bogosian?
Aye.
Councilmember Han?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Streepman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Mayor Pounds?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you. Next one is Resolution twenty twenty two oh two, opposing bill H forty five forty seven, which would limit local government's ability to regulate short term rentals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions, comments? This is a, we're being proactive and in front of this, this is not on the floor, this is not for discussion anywhere within the current state legislature, but it's been introduced as a bill. So I think our learning from our S forty path last year is, let's get in front of this and put a resolution out there. Desiree, if you want to update, I know we've had conversations with Sullivan's and other barrier islands to see if they want to join in with us on this. If not, we'll go it alone, and that's fine, but if you have an update for that.
Yes, there is interest. I've reached to my counterparts in neighboring communities and other beach communities, and they've shared the action that you all were considering tonight with their mayors and councils, and there seems to be broad support with also adopting the same or similar resolution very soon.
So we're not suggesting waiting and forming a coalition against it? We're going to still submit this, right?
Correct. I've shared the draft and the copy of the resolution that you all have, and with thinking that they, they might want to just use the same language, they can certainly make their own changes, but in essence, they would be opposing the same bill as this council is.
Yeah, we'll move forward with the I O P version.
Yeah, it's extremely important to get this out there.
Yeah. Rusty?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have we spoken to Mount Pleasant?
Not yet.
I had seen some communication, you know, informal communication in that community there where they were also against this.
I imagine everybody should.
Sweet. So we could be, so we could be on the same side on one?
Nicole?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Bogosian?
Aye.
Councilmember Han?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Streepman?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Mayor Pounds?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you. Miscellaneous business, the adoption of our strategic plan, twenty twenty two to twenty twenty seven, just real quick background on that, we've been working on this for over a year with council, residents had insight into this, and were able to reply to a survey staff in the College of Charleston. This was reviewed in our offsite in early January, as we mentioned earlier.